Six. Got my shirt thirty-two. A roll call, please.
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Gineo is not present. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Yep.
And we have Michael Goodman from, uh, Town Attorney's Office remotely.
Okay, and then Cindy.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman.
Is Cindy on remotely?
Yes, she is.
Okay. All right. Okay. Item two, consideration and discussion regarding two new proposed single-family zoning districts within Town Chino Valley. You are not Will. It says Will right here. Go get Will.
Thought you might not notice. Will is out this week, so I'm, uh, I'm filling in for him on these things.
Okay.
So, the, um, quarter acre and half acre zoning, single-family zoning districts will be coming to you in March. And we thought it would be good to have just a little conversation with you about where the planning commission started and where they ended up. So that you can see that progression of thought. Um, and, and why they, uh, will recommend to you what they, what they did. So the two sheets you have in front of you are the ones that we started off with talking with the planning commission about. So we have half acre and quarter acre. And one of the, of the, um, issues that we were concerned about as staff was that there are many land splits that have a road easement that's taken off the front of the parcel. So, we, we also had a number of, um, minor subdivisions that came through with, with the whole, the whole line of lots had a road easement, fifty-foot wide road easement taken off the front of these parcels. So, with that in mind, what we wanted to do was talk with them about, what size lot are you actually getting? When you're saying that you want half acre, quarter acre. Um, and if you, because an acre is not an even number, when you divide it up, it gives you some weird random bunch of numbers. There's no zoning code in the country that will do that. And so they give you round numbers, twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-four thousand, thirty thousand square foot lots. Um, so, we offered a variety of numbers to the planning commission. But when we were analyzing it and we decided, well, let's take off this roadway that we've seen the last couple of subdivisions that came through. When we thought we were getting a twelve thousand square foot lot, we were actually getting an eighty-five hundred square foot lot. Because the front fifty feet is not usable portion of the lot for the family, it's roadway. So visually, you're getting something really close to the zero point one-six. Which is not where we wanted to go. So, we talked a lot about effective lot size and gross lot size. So, um, in all of our discussions, the commission decided that they wanted to have an effective lot size. And so, um, when someone comes in and they want to have a twelve thousand square foot lot, it's without the road easement added into it. So that was the first thing we worked through, and that was a couple of meetings with them, talking through these concepts and showing them these different designs and having them, um, understand different roadway, um, dedications. So we had Frank there, talking about stuff, we had a lot of exhibits. And these were the two that really stuck in their minds was, what, what are we really getting when we say we want half an acre? You know? So they've decided they want effective lot area. And so that is the square footage that we are going to be requiring as a minimum in those districts. We also gave them, as you can see, a variety of numbers to choose from. So, we started at ten thousand square foot for a minimum. So if you had four, that's forty thousand square feet, uh, an acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So you'd have like a little bit left over. Um, and so there was a lot of discussion about, should, is it appropriate for us to plan so that every single acre can be split into four parcels? Or is that not really our goal? Is our goal just to get good land planning for the community? So there was a lot of discussion about sizing of lots, what size is the appropriate size? And that's true for the half acre as well. Then we went into lot width. Because you can have a big lot, but if you have a narrow frontage, when you're driving down the street, it looks like you have a small lot because every house is really close together. And so we had a lot of exhibits showing that and talking about what's appropriate for a lot width. Because they had originally started with, um, a pretty small lot width for these sizes, in my opinion. Um, they're still relatively small, but they aren't sixty feet. You know, when you get sixty feet of, as a lot width, the rest of the lot's way behind you. And the houses are still pretty close together. Because most people put it as close to the front as possible so that their connection to the water and sewer doesn't cost them a lot. They also want to make sure that they preserve enough in the back for all the things they want to do in their rear yard. Um, in a perfect planning world, square lots are really awesome. Cause it gives you enough side away from your neighbor. And it gives you the space around you that you need. And visually, it looks like the size lot that it is, which is much bigger than the narrow ones. So we, we had a lot of these discussions, uh, with the planning commission in the, probably four meetings that we had discussing this. So are there questions about these, e- either, any of these concepts?
I, I do.
Okay.
On the setbacks, I know on an acre, they're usually like twenty feet on the sides and fifty to the rear. So are setbacks adjusted for smaller lots? A smaller lot, the least a setback? Or are we maintaining that distance?
Well, I do not have that in front of me. So that's a good question. I'll make sure I have that.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
As the lots come down, if the, if the setbacks.
Right, and they should diminish as the lots get smaller and they should enlarge as the lot size gets bigger.
Unless somebody wanted a huge house on it, just, it didn't want any lot left over. You know, like they're building in, uh, Deepwell in there. Or Saddleback or whatever that thing's.
Oh, it does say forty percent lot covered.
I know that the setback, the front setback is a standard in the code, which.
It's fifty foot, right?
Um, I think it's either fifty foot from the center line or twenty foot from the right of way line.
Yeah, this is showing fifty on their drawings here.
The fifty is the dedicated easement width. So if you had one subdivision that went back off the main road, you'd have a fifty-foot wide easement that has to be, um, created. And that, that shaves off that fifty feet that, from the front of all those properties. And so, it, it was, uh, finally a decision by the planning commission that they didn't want to include that fifty feet in the front because effectively you get a lot that's much smaller. So, so they say, oh, well, if it's a quarter acre, that we can't say it's eighty-five hundred square feet. And I said, well, that's what you get if you count that fifty feet in the front. So they decided they, that they didn't want to count it that way, that, that it was the effective lot area that's usable by only that family that they wanted to count, not the roadway access in and out.
How many square feet is point one-six in it?
It's like seven thousand.
So I have a question. Um, before we get too far into this. I'm curious, why is this deemed necessary to best serve the public interest? How are we best serving the public interest by making smaller parcels in our community?
Well, in the UDO Subcommittee, one of the, the bullet points for the reason for that committee to be created was, that was one of their goals, was to create districts that were smaller than one acre. So, with, because that's still on the books, that was the direction that I was using to come up with smaller lots. Now, these aren't seven thousand square foot lots.
Right.
But it, we have just removed the zero point one-six. These are, these are tools in the toolbox for larger lots than that. Um, but not as small as the seven, and we won't go anything close to that until we get the general plan done and figure out, who are we? What do we want to look like? Where do we want pockets of higher density? And I'm expecting them to be pockets, not big swaths of areas. Cause that's just not what this community is. So I'm expecting pockets of higher density. But currently, um, until we took the zero point one-six and put it into outdated or obsolete, you could put those pretty much anywhere. And so that, that's not, that's not good planning. That's not planning at all, it's just kind of a free-for-all.
No, I, I just asked the question because that's what it, when I read this, you know, it, it said the reason for, or the UDO allows for this to best serve public interest, health, comfort, and so on. And this was put out here to best serve the public interest, so I was just curious what that thought process was.
Yep, that was the thought process.
Has there been any kind of demand for lots this size at all?
Yes.
From the public? They're coming in wanting more than point one-six, but they don't? Cause by looking at this, somebody can take an acre and split it four times?
Um, it depends on which minimum lot size was chosen. The planning commission selected the twelve thousand square foot lot, so you could get three lots out of an acre.
Even three of them.
That would require water and sewer, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So these are district options.
Correct.
Today, if I had a, a one acre parcel, I wanted to split it, whatever. Prior, we had to use a pad attached to the point one-six. So today, there is no way to do that, absent these being approved.
That is correct.
So, the only, the lowest, the, the lowest one we have in books today is the one acre SR one, is that correct?
Correct.
And then, so, in theory, we will, if, let's say we adopted what the planning and zoning, the twelve thousand for the half, or for the quarter, twenty-four thousand for the half. If you had a one acre parcel, you truly couldn't do a true one-half acre, you couldn't split it in half based on these numbers.
These are minimums, you could take one acre and split it in half.
Well, when I look here at twenty-four thousand, and then it's an effective twenty thousand.
That's true.
Okay, but an acre is forty-three.
Forty-three, five sixty, yeah.
You're actually under the forty-three, so how, you wouldn't have an effective twenty thousand if you're giving away the easement. Oh, my God. Sorry.
Okay, now you gotta repeat all that.
Does that make, am I asking the right question?
No, you are asking the right question. If you choose to go with what the planning commission recommended, which was a twenty-four thousand square foot lot effectively.
Or, no, it's, the effective would be twenty thousand.
No, what they decided was, they didn't want to have a lot size and then take off the fifty feet. So if you, if you create a zone that's twenty-four thousand square feet, the twenty-four thousand square feet is minus a roadway easement. So you would have to have more land, four thousand square feet more land on the front of your parcel.
So I, I get, I get what you're saying. If, if you only had one acre, you cannot get two twenty-four thousand square foot lots.
But you could get three quarters.
But, or you could, or you could get, uh, a quarter and a half.
Yes, you could, a quarter and a half.
Yeah. I just want to make sure, I'm not, not against, I just want to make sure I understand.
You are absolutely correct.
No.
We had, we had a lot of dialogue about lot sizes and what that means in the community.
So as the commission decided, um, looking at these, we have three choices on each one, have they talked about which one they like?
Yes, they did. They ultimately are going to recommend to you twelve thousand and twenty-four thousand.
Twelve thou, twenty-four thousand.
So, okay, so on that twenty-four thousand with the, that, the number below it says effective lot. Uh, why is that effective in there and not, I mean, is it effective twenty-four thousand or is it effective?
So our original discussion with the planning commission was talking about subdivisions, minor subdivisions, where they take, um, a, a roadway easement up the side. And so with those, their lots are counted from the other side of the easement all the way to their back property line. So they have that front four thousand square feet that is not an effective part of their lot that they can use solely for their purposes. So you have four thousand square feet in the front, that's everybody's road. But their lot now becomes twenty thousand square feet of usable lot for themselves. So the, the commission decided that they wanted to make sure that each lot had twenty-four thousand square feet of usable space just for that property owner.
So, assume for the sake of discussion, I own an acre off of Center Street that's accessible. And the, the, it's a wide but narrow lot, okay? So it's, it's run, most of the land that you can see on that one acre is on Center Street and it's accessible. So the easement's already there. Could I split it then evenly? Because I don't need to dedicate any land because they'd both be serviceable right off of Center. And I'm just using that as an example.
It depends on how that easement was written, if it's included as part of the total square footage of your parcel or not.
Okay.
So we, we look at each one of these cases individually to make sure that, that, um, that we read the easement properly and that we know who owns that. And if the, if that, um, dedication piece for the roadway is included in their, their parcel or not.
I got you, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. How about over here, you guys got anything on the side, you all quiet? No, you talk Lonnie, you're okay. I'm talking about you other two. We're good. Just kidding. Any?
No, fourth time, no, I don't have any names. And, and this would be, this would be any piece of property within the town limits as long as it had water and sewer available to it. Is this correct?
Well, and it would have to be zoned, these districts, so they'd have to go through a rezone through the planning commission and through the council.
It would have to fit into the general plan.
Yes, it would, and it would have to fit in with what's going on in the neighborhood. So this is a, kind of an interim thing until we know exactly what's going on with the general plan. And then we confirm up what this actually looks like for us in the future.
Okay.
Sarah, can I get you to hand these down? So the next thing that we talked about was width of the lot versus length of the lot. Um, we had a lot of discussion about narrower frontages in an effort for certain planning commission members to, um, visualize them getting more lots out of an acre. Um, we also had discussion from other ca, planning commission members who said it's not our job to make sure people get more lots out of their acreage. So we had really robust dialogue with the planning commission. Uh, one of the things that Will prepared was this, uh, group of tables because we have a three foot, three-to-one ratio requirement in the zoning code. You can't be three times longer than the width. Because otherwise you get these little pencil lots. And you look like you got row houses, just like you're in New York or Philadelphia. Because the house is like right there, next to both side property lines. And if you had a truck and a trailer, you couldn't get in the rear if you tried. And so we had a lot, a lot of dialogue about lot widths. And the planning commission did choose a wider lot width, I think they said seventy, was it seventy and eighty, do you remember? Eighty and a hundred? My goal tonight wasn't to actually give you all of those details, just to talk you through what their thought process was. Okay, so, so we started at seventy for both of the parcel sizes. And, um, like I said, there was robust conversation because there was not a lot of agreement that that was a smart thing for us to do in this community. Because visually, like I said, driving down the street, it looks like you have small lots when you have houses all together very narrow and with side, small side yards. Thank you so much for that. So we prepared for the commission this table to show them what doesn't work. Um, we were actually hoping for more red in the upper group. But we did not get more red in the upper group. That was okay, we, we had dialogue. And the, the commission made their recommendation. But I, I just wanted to give you guys that piece so that you know that that was scrutinized in a number of ways. Um, from, from the perspective of someone trying to split up their land as much as possible, to what does it visually look like for this community? And if we're saying half acre and quarter acre, is that what it looks like? Is that what it feels like? Is that the perception that you get when you drive down the street? Or does it look just like the zero point one-six subdivisions that we have with houses very close to each other? And so we did have some graphics, um, and some photos from different neighborhoods to show that. So you'll be seeing those. But I think that that helped them see that they probably didn't want really narrow lots. Because if you're going to do that, why bother to have a half acre and a quarter acre lot, why don't you just keep the zero point one-six? Because in essence, that's what you get visually from the road. So, yes.
Hi, thank you. Um, just for council discussion, I'm of the mindset that it's not really our business to tell people how they can have their, um, frontage. I understand the need as far as planning is concerned, because these are applicable to subdivisions or minor subdivisions. Um, but I don't think that's for us to decide, and that's just my opinion. I yield.
Say that one more time, that you don't.
I couldn't.
You, you don't think it's.
We should regulate the three-to-one, is what you were saying.
Well, no, um, it's not, no, the three-to-one I agree with. Um, however, I don't think we should stipulate what people can and cannot do as far as their frontage. I understand it's for a subdivision or, or minor subdivision. But I don't think, um, it's for us to decide, you have to have this much footage. What if they don't want, what if the plant, the developer doesn't want that? Then we just say no? You know, I mean, I don't agree that it's, it, and if these have to go through planning and zoning, then that's planning and zoning, zoning's responsibility to ensure the overall plan is, is cohesive before they send it to us. So I don't think we should put in our planning in these district options that they have to have specific lot frontage feet per town requirements. That doesn't make sense to me that we would, that we would have to tell them what they could and could not have in the front of their house. That's speaking simply from a personal property rights position.
Every district that we have has a minimum lot width. Every single district also has a minimum lot size. And we have the ratio so that we don't have long and skinny, which creates lots that in the rear aren't functional for the property owner or accessible. If they ultimately do want to split and they have enough land to do that. So that's the purpose for that.
Anything?
I'm festering.
Okay.
Good term, festering. That sounds like kind of a boondoggle to me, we'll see what comes out.
If a property becomes a third acre, not a quarter, not a half, what would it be zoned as normally? Would it go to the next higher one up because it's higher than point two-five?
No, it,
Go down.
The minimum size is what dictates it. So if it hasn't reached the size of the next district, it would have to be zoned the smaller district. And these are minimums. This, this, it's, it's not like, oh, if I'm zoned this, I have to have my lot exactly this size. You don't, that's a minimum. And unfortunately, that becomes the, the, the basement for everything that we do. As opposed to, hey, you can do things higher and bigger, you just can't go smaller than those.
Okay. And the three-to-one rule is?
In the zoning code right now.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
Okay. Pretty much what I'm thinking, what, what I'm hearing is, we're trying to set down or regulate the rules of what it can be so that we do not have all these little teeny spaces that are built upon, which I believe, I believe the people have said they like a little bit larger and a more spacious here in Chino Valley.
I agree with you. Anything else over here on this? Anything else here?
I, I agree with the frontage size. You're right about getting your property to the back. That's a big, you need that, you need to have width in front of the property.
And if it's not quantified, in other words, spelled out, someone will try to twist it, bend it, knead it, and make it fit their personal needs.
All right.
Okay, so just, just to clarify, I'm good with the three-one rule. Um, and even if that applies to the twelve thousand square foot lot, because it does meet the three-one rule. Um, and that's, in my opinion, if this is what P and Z is, is recommending, um, then when it goes through P and Z, they can set forth the recommendations and make sure that it's in compliance. I don't feel comfortable making a rule on twelve thousand square foot lot. You can, you must have one width of frontage. I don't, I just don't agree that it's our job.
So you're saying that if you're doing the twelve thousand square foot lot, you're seeing that they have to have seventy, seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five, or ninety? That they can't have eighty-two? Or eighty-four? Is that what you're saying?
Um, no, what I'm thinking is that twelve thousand square foot lot, all of these numbers are okay with the three-one rule. So I don't think we should, um, make a recommendation or a whatnot, um, to make that, um, a minimum.
Okay.
On, on any of them.
I understand.
Does that, does that make sense to everybody?
I think so.
And that's for the, the residents who want to split the lot and the developers that might, might want to come in, that's, um, planning and zoning's gonna have to oversee that.
Okay.
I mean, smaller lots, those setback, front, front setbacks are still seventy and eighty or a hundred? They're still gonna be in there, right? Cause I'm thinking about, if you go down Perkinsville Road, just past, I think it's, yeah, just past the community center, there's a, there's a group of homes that I swear that I feel like their house is right there on Perkins.
Are those fifteen-foot setbacks on those?
Those are what?
Aren't they fifteen-foot setbacks?
Yeah, and that just, that, that's the only place that I can recall seeing it like that. And I don't want to see that repeated.
That was, um, that was pre-designated?
That mine in a row thing.
Years in a row.
Okay. And that's what I'm trying to, yeah, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
Right, everything else is twenty feet, those are fifteen. They came in with a special approval.
Are, are the, uh, I'm sorry, I think you, Jack answered the question, or you answered it for Jack. But are the, the setbacks gonna stay the same as they are right now for point sixteen? For a quarter acre? Or are they gonna be redesigned?
Ten, twenty, thirty-five.
You mean the front or the side? I think they're.
Both, they're all around.
They're all the same, they all stay the same.
So on a quarter acre, they'll stay the same as a point sixteen.
But not on an acre. Frank's got his hand up behind you.
You want to present?
No, I just, I had looked up the UDO while you were talking about it, and those are all the same.
Thank you. Frank has confirmed that these are all the same as the one acre.
Oh, are they? Okay. The quarter acre?
Quarter acre, half acre, and one acre have the same front, side, and rear setbacks.
Wow. That's kind of good in a way.
The fronts, the fronts all the same throughout the community.
It keeps it separated, but what if you want to move your house closer to one side to build a garage?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't, I mean, I, I think they should be lower setbacks.
Depend on your lot width. Are you, we're talking about the point one-six, right?
Yeah, I'm talking about the point one-six is.
We don't have them on here. It's still the smallest width is seventy foot. So if you take twenty, right Frank, off each side?
Side yard is ten feet.
Ten?
Size's ten.
So twenty, that's.
Front is twenty, side is ten.
That's kind of a narrow house.
Yeah.
And a drive, and a, and a driveway in.
And a driveway.
We get it, yeah. Well.
I don't want to put my house at the front so I can have an arena in the back, and you're taking that away from me because I can't pull a truck and trailer back there.
So the planning commission couldn't enforce a minimum lot width unless it was in the code. So even if they looked at it and said, yeah, these really need to be eighty feet wide unless it's in the zoning code, they wouldn't be able to enforce that.
Right. Right. Alright. Anything else on this?
I don't think you'd be able to build an arena on a quarter acre.
Nope.
Anything on that side? You good?
No.
Okay.
We're not doing anything with this tonight.
Absolutely not.
Disinformation.
It's, it's for it to simmer with you because the, the commission took three or four meetings where we went through a lot of this stuff. So it's not there to you guys to take it at a public hearing without you having some pre-information about it. So that you can think about. The, the kinds of things that they thought of and that they worked themselves through to their recommendation.
Okay.
So we can digest this and come back and talk about it again.
Yeah, when we go, when we talk, and this is coming next council?
Hmm, it will be the 22nd, I believe. Because we don't have a March 8th.
Right, because there was nothing on the.
So in a month.
Okay, that gives a long time to chew on it.
Yes, it does.
Alright, are we good with that? We're moving on to the next item?
Did you know it's Tuesday?
What's Tuesday?
Today.
Yes. Today's Tuesday. Two, twenty-two, two, twenty-two, twenty-two.
Tuesday.
Oh, two.
Two, 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 two.
Random. Sorry, carry on.
If you're a number person.
Consideration and possible discussion regarding changes to temporary use permits.
So I just wanted to share with you that going through the U D O, the temporary use permit section is actually tucked in commercial light. I, I didn't think we even had one.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
The temporary use permit section is tucked, is, is a subset of the commercial light district. So that means you can't have any temporary uses in any other district. I think that that was an error. So I just wanted to share with you that I'm going to be pulling that out as a separate standalone section of the code. And one of the things that I would like to put in there is model home complex. Instead of it coming to you as a conditional use permit, that could be a temporary use permit that's done administratively. Of course, any appeals would come to you guys anyways. If you, and, if you enjoy having the home, model home complexes come to you, then we can keep doing that. This is the first place I have ever worked where the council reviewed that.
Okay, can you define a model home for me?
A model home complex. You guys had one on Perkinsville 44. It came to you as a C U P. And they identify which lots they were gonna build houses on. They were gonna convert the garage into a sales area.
Right, 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 okay.
So that's your model home complex.
And that's, and we've already approved everything up to that point.
Yes, you have.
Yeah, we, isn't there one on, uh, four, Road four?
Four north.
They have one there, so. Okay.
So I, I'm, I'm going to propose that that goes in there. Of course, it'll, I'll come to you guys and you can talk about whether that makes sense or not. Um, I also want to take temporary trailer during construction. It's kind of a standalone thing. I'd like to put it under a temporary use permit. So that we actually issue a temporary use permit instead of it being kind of handwritten on the building permit. It's a separate thing and they have a time limit as long as their building permit's active. There's their temporary use permit for their trailer to live on site is also, uh, corresponds with that.
Okay, are those six months at a time?
They are six months at a time. Um, or, uh, in terms of the temporary trailer during construction. We can tie it to the life of the building permit and put a, a year, a year's cap on it. Hopefully it wouldn't take longer than a year to.
Year and a half.
Build a house. Okay.
Good.
Take a year to get.
With today's world, it sure could take longer than a year.
Oh, it's so scary. I feel sorry for people, sorry Cindy, that are trying to build a house right now because. I mean, windows are like 18 months out. Who, whoever thought that that would even be happening?
So my understanding is that this is going to be, what you're proposing is, for example, the model homes. They don't come to council. They just are handled administratively, not. Complexes of modular, not developments, neighborhoods, but just the model homes.
Just the model home after you guys have already approved the neighborhood.
Thank you. I just needed clarification on that.
And then if there are other types of things you'd like it to see in a temporary use permit section. Then that would be the time that I could add that in there. So I, I wanted you guys to be thinking about that kind of stuff.
You good with that?
Could you give a couple examples?
How about this side?
Um. Like 4 H for, um, their, their animals, they're supposed to have a temporary use permit.
Really? Like if they're gonna raise a calf, they have to have a permit?
Yeah, but we, we've already had conversations with the ag folks at the high school. They thought it was a great idea. We'll work with them. The code actually says that right now. But the issue is that the temporary use permits tucked in the commercial light and people don't live in commercial light. They live in residential zone. So there's a lot of weird stuff out there.
Okay, one more clarification.
Yeah.
So. Even if they're on a one acre agriculture, minimal, multifamily, whatever, single family residential agriculture. They need a permit for their animals? I don't know about the rest of the council. I'd like to see that changed. A permit for their animals to raise?
It makes sense to me on lots that are small with other lots that are small.
But even under one acre or over one acre?
That's the way it looks right now.
Yeah, I'd like to see that changed.
I don't think we have an issue yet, but coming soon. Probably won't see an issue with that.
So like, what's the purpose?
Um, I think. For my experience in Yuma, we had a lot of people, we had a 40,000 square foot lot minimum. And then we changed it and we did types of animals to, to certain sizes of lots. And the idea was that if you're a 4 H person and you're gonna be raising animals, that you could walk to your neighbors and tell them, hey. I'm gonna be raising this animal. I'm gonna keep it neat and clean. Let me know if, if there's, you know, so that they become good neighbors. They learn how to, uh, be, um. Trying to think of the right word, like, kind of like dignitaries and, um, learn to speak well with their neighbors. And be good neighbors with taking care of their animals in smaller lots.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Is that just for F F A kids or like once you become an adult, you can have animals?
This calls out 4 H F F A.
And that's temporary, that's for.
Temporary.
That's six months.
So that would supersede the rule, like that says if you don't have.
So.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, you go.
So that's one of the things I wanted to look at because it didn't necessarily make sense to me, so.
So that would supersede, like the rule you have to have one acre, every, one cow per acre or horse or whatever?
And then two horses per acre?
We would look at all of those pieces and probably have a lot of work sessions with you guys before we move forward.
Yeah, that's kinda.
I was gonna say right now.
You find some really interesting things when you start reading the code.
The county is actually more restrictive than the town. You can have as many horses on your property. There is no limitation.
Oh, the county's two horses per acre.
The county is, but we're, but they don't have the jurisdiction on this, so. You hear that from realtors regularly. It's like, if you adopt the county rules, then you're gonna be more restrictive. If you stick with the city rules, you can have 50 horses on an acre. It's, it's permissible.
So anyways, my goal wasn't to talk about animals tonight because I don't have all that stuff in my backpack.
You're in Chino. It kind of happens.
Alright, well, we'll cover that up next time.
Yeah, to be continued on that.
Anything else on this?
Nope.
This side? Okay, I guess, are we done?
Yeah.
We're done. Alright, we stand adjourned until six. Thank you.